Things on my mind, one of which you just kind of mentioned. So my first question, and they're both a little bit different. So my first question is related with foreign policy. And like, I want peace, I'm, my husband's Israeli, I have a lot of family in Israel. But what do you do when the other side doesn't want peace? And, and what are we doing about UNRWA? Because I'm a UN worker for almost a decade and it's not helping the situation. It's actually like perpetuating this war.
What specifically about UNRWA? Funding?
The funding, yeah. The funding, the relationship, like, when do we hold custody is also accountable for peace?
Well, you know, UNRWA is no longer the recipient of, of, of dollars. So we begun that by not giving money to UNRWA because of the relationships you, you contemplate. And how do you, the second part of your question is, how do we, how do we work with one side as one piece and the other? That's why I have withheld my support for a unilateral ceasefire. Because unilateral ceasefire is an oxymoron. What is a unilateral ceasefire? What does that even mean? When one side stops but the other side gets to go, that's not, that's not a ceasefire. I have long been supportive of and have always been. Listen, my wife is, is a career combat veteran. So I am a huge supporter of, of the military. My wife was just pinned, you may have seen in the press last week, as a two-star general. So, so when people ask me, what do I think about women in charge? I said, I live with women in charge. I take the trash out just as soon as she tells me. Yes, ma'am. But, but the, the fact is, having a strong defense and having the resources to make sure that we deal with people who are one-sided. What do you do when one side wants peace and the other doesn't? Is you act accordingly. You use all the tools in our toolbox to make sure that we don't negotiate with terrorists. We don't back down from terrorists and we don't abandon our friends who are in a battle with terrorists. And Hamas is in fact, a terrorist organization that's used as a proxy for Iran who hates America. And we have to really realize the big picture here. Iran hates America, hates Americans. Hamas is a tool of Iran. It's a much bigger picture. And as I try to have these conversations in multiple circles, I remind people that foreign affairs, it's like moving a granule of sand in a huge sandbox. When you move one, it impacts every single other granule in the box. So it's very complex. It's not as easy as what appears to be. It's not as easy as some of us, myself included, are accused of doing Monday morning after a Sunday Saints game. Of what I would have done, what I should have done. How could he throw that pass? Well, you gotta deal with what you see at that moment. And unless you're on the field, you really don't have the full appreciation. So your comments are well taken and it's an ongoing battle and we're gonna keep fighting it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I was wondering if your views reflect the majority of the Black Caucus?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about how they're handling the situation in the regard to Jewish-American relations?
Yeah, I think that the Congressional Black Caucus, which I am the, the vice chair of, I will say, the super majority are, share my views in, in, as it relates to the relationship between US and Jewish relations and Israel relations. It is something that I think records and history reflect has been probably, if not the most unified supporting group in the US Congress, has been the Congressional Black Caucus. Largely because of the rich history of what the battles that Jewish individuals have had to undergo with, with racism and hate and atrocities African-Americans have likewise had to go through hate atrocities historically, from slavery to present discrimination. But also the fact that it's not fallen on deaf ears or on African-Americans that through the thickest, most difficult times of the civil rights era, there were African-Americans and Jew, Jews walking arm in arm, fighting for the rights of African-Americans. And that is not something that the Black Caucus or most African-Americans have forgotten and always pay homage to in a relation, and respect the relationship that we have. Yes, sir.
Morris Metz. You mentioned, well, first of all, I also want to add my thanks for your being here and for your support for Israel and the Jewish community at large. You mentioned in your last, or the comment before last, Iran. And while we may have difference of opinion or may not, I think we both agree that Iran is the, the troublemaker at the top of the stack in, in the Middle East at least and if not much of the world. In my view, and I'm curious about yours, in my view, we seem to continue to reward Iran. We release their money, we release all, all of their, their resources, we're not holding to our, our sanctions. How do you view it and how do you view we should be dealing with Iran at this time going forward?
I can, I, I'll go to that granule of sand piece of it being a very complex scenario. And I can only tell you, if I were ruler of the world for one day, I would probably do things differently. But being ruler of the world one day doesn't give you the big enough picture that has, that has to force you to have to live another day and another day and another day. So sometimes when contemplating the moves on a chessboard, you have to do things sometimes that you might do otherwise because you've gotta look at the long game. Of what does relationships in the Middle East and in other parts of the world mean? And I'm not, I don't wanna overcomplicate this nor I don't wanna oversimplify it, but I will tell you that I agree. And oftentimes I find myself screaming at the television or screaming at my colleagues that why the heck aren't we doing more? You know, why don't we shut down Putin? Why don't we just, you know, blah, blah, blah? Why don't we just shut down Iran? Why don't we? And I'm constantly reminded by my, my, my colleagues who are much more joined in foreign policy than I. And I try to be a pretty good student. And the complexities make your head spin of all of the intricacies of sometime, that sometimes force us to step back and instead, or step forward. And I'm, I'm not playing words with you. I'm just trying to express the challenge involved. I don't disagree with you. I've, I've expressed to you my support of a, the strongest, most technologically sound military. And that's because I think we should always have the arms at, at, at fingers' reach to defend America and to defend democracy all over the globe. Sometimes a strategic move, however, looking like it doesn't get you where you wanna go, is more effective than a military move that may cause loss of life and a greater challenge to democracy around the corner that's not evident in your, in your frontal view. Yeah, that's one we can have a few bottles of wine and a couple of coffees and, and a snack or two and we can debate that all day because I don't know that there is a right or wrong answer. It is the adage of playing the hand you're dealt and figuring out how to get the best outcome. Because foreign affairs is in fact, a moving target daily. And if you talk to different generals, you talk to different tacticians or strategists, you will get different views. But the one thing that would be common among those discussions is, it's very complex. And it's, it's just not as easy as it appears on its face. But very good question. Yes? Sure?
Is the Congress doing anything with regard to the International Court of Justice, the International Court of Appeals attacking Israel and Israelis? Is there any resolution in Congress to defend?
No resolution at the time. I mean, it is, again, that's one of... I'll say yes, because I'm an optimist. And I believe there's always a possible resolution. It's not an easy one. I was just in Israel not long ago and in fact, I was there, I think maybe two weeks before October 7th. And so I was there when there were picketers that were out. There's a lot of moving parts and it's, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but it's very challenging. If it wasn't, we wouldn't have had hundreds of years of unrest. So it, it's, it's...
Single Israel has to work on having South Africa do that. Interference what's going on, come on, that's, that should be pretty much, you know, brother to nephew, fine, you know?
I don't disagree. But as I mentioned, any, doing anything in Congress is, is a challenge. Particularly when you have now probably the greatest level of divide among the parties that we've ever had before. Ever had before.
Tell Comey is a conspiracy.
Pardon?
Tell Comey is a conspiracy.
One more time.
Tell Comey is a conspiracy.
Yeah, yeah. It's, 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 it's a challenge and it's ugly unfortunately because I live it. You know, when I served in, my, my life has been that of a very, very proud Democrat. But also that of one that has worked across the aisle to try to come up with solutions. When I was on the city council, when I was a member of the House of Representatives, a member of the Senate and now in Congress, my history has dictated that you can be as proud as you wanna be as a Democrat, you can be as proud as you wanna be as a Republican, but you don't have a right to be prouder of your party than you are of your country.
Tell us about your relationship with Kamala Harris and what she's all about and her connection with Israel.
Yes. Kamala Harris is a dear friend. She, as you know, served as district attorney, served as attorney general, served as United States Senator, now currently serves as the Vice President of the United States of America. For those who would challenge and say, is she qualified? I'm not sure what else you need to do. She is probably one of the most, and I'm only saying probably because I haven't dealt it to everyone, but I will, no, I'll say she probably is, I won't say she is. One of the most consequential vice presidents that we've ever had with the requisite academic and professional background. At the convention, I was, I knew this as a fact, but it felt good to hear her say it and it really stuck when she said, my entire life has been Kamala Harris for the people. As a young prosecutor, Kamala Harris for the people. As a district attorney, Kamala Harris for the people. As an attorney general, Kamala Harris for the people. As a US Senator, Kamala Harris for the people. As Vice President, Kamala Harris for the people. And when you look at a public servant, you should be able to answer that question, that your role has been that of someone who has stood up for the people. I'm proud to say that my friend, our friend, the nominee, and in my estimation, everyone has the right to vote whatever they want, in my estimation, someone that should be our next president of the United States of America. Someone that, that gets it. Someone that has worked very hard with, someone that I believe has been one of the best presidents that we've ever had, and that's Joseph Arben. And I believe that her, her belief in the relationships and her support both in word and deed and at least in her, I don't know how much of that would have come up as an attorney general or as a district attorney, but I will tell you, as a US Senator and as a Vice President, she has been lockstep solid in her support for Israel. And I believe that that will continue to be that way. And that we can continue to see the kind of leadership that we dictate, that we have peace and harmony and that the relationship between the US and Israel will continue to grow and only get better. She is a, she's a very smart woman. As you know, her husband Doug is in fact Jewish. And her, her history and belief and, again, I'm a big checker of facts. Because we can all say what we want. We can all read from papers that someone else wrote and we can sound really good. But when we veer from the written notes and are able to talk about the facts and then able to produce what I refer to as receipts. Receipts. Not things that I'm going to do, but things that I've done. Because the greatest determinant of what a person is going to do is what they've done. And I think she has tons of things that's made America proud. And I think she is, she is the, the likely candidate to succeed, someone that I believe history will reflect as one of the best presidents we've ever had.
Troy.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, here and there.
Hi, I'm Leslie.
Hi, Leslie.
Thank you for being here. And in addition to being here for our community, I appreciate that you always center on the local people back home. When I see you on C-SPAN, like, I, I can tell that you care about us. But my question is, you mentioned the people who are mad at you for being soft on Israel. That's an understatement. And they're mad at us too. And it's especially difficult setting aside all the, the heartache and anguish that that entails of them being mad at us and the war and all the things that are going on with us. We've worked with them historically on things like voting rights, racial equality, reproductive rights, and there's so much work we need to do here nationally. What's your advice to us on trying not to put ourselves and our identities aside and continue to do that work? Because I know it's something that you have to do all the time as a legislator.
And as a black man.
Yes.
I, I, every room I go into, I'm a black man. And so, and I think every room you should go into, you should be proud to be Jewish. And for those who, who hate you for that, that's really their burden. That's their burden. And as long as we keep waking up together and saying, you're not gonna make me hide my faith. You're not gonna make me hide my race. You're not gonna hate me, cause me to, to denounce that which I believe. And I think they have to eventually back down. I think they have to eventually back down. And they're strengthened numbers. And when we walk arm in arm and we say, we're not gonna give in to the haters, we're not gonna give in to those who disagree with us so vehemently that they would want to hurt us. Unfortunately, history is a way of repeating itself. And the best way to make sure that doesn't happen is to keep the lights on. To keep talking about it. To stay in their face. Even if that means some of us may get hurt in the process. Because imagine what would have happened if all those that have gone before us had not put themselves in harm's way. We wouldn't be here tonight. I'm sorry, I'm getting, then I'm back here. Did you have, yes?
My name is Mendel. Thank you very much for being here and for your, for everything that you've done, being so supportive. I wanna go back to the foreign policy issue for a second.
Yes, sir.
You spoke about the administration's push for a bilateral ceasefire. I'm wondering how we can expect for there to be a sustained bilateral ceasefire when the other side has demonstrated over and over again that they don't respect that. In fact, like Nancy Pelosi said, there was a ceasefire on October 7th.
That's right. Yeah, and that's a fact. But to, to not still push for a ceasefire is to allow perpetual war and the perpetual bloodshed and the perpetual loss of innocent lives. So although clearly Hamas violated the ceasefire that we had prior to October 7th, we still have a responsibility to continue to fight for peace wherever possible. Even though we may be entering into an agreement with someone who's demonstrated they're not trustworthy. And as Ronald Reagan made popular, trust but verify. Trust but verify. Said a little bit differently, trust but double check. Trust but always keep an eye open. Trust but make sure that you stay close and never lay your arms down of your protection. Because we're not necessarily dealing with someone that has the credibility to make a deal that will, that will live out its term. But we still, every day, wake up hoping that peace will win. And I believe in my heart of hearts, my, my upbringing, my belief, my faith tells me, peace will still prevail. Ma'am?
I'm really concerned about what's going on on university campuses. And even today, there's been an explosion on a lot of different campuses now that school has begun again. What can Congress do to help ameliorate the situation?
I wish Congress could do something to ameliorate the, the situation. Fortunately, we can appropriate money, we can try to have meetings like this with both sides to try to, to make a passionate plea for peaceful resolution. Unfortunately, again, it's much more complex. My son is a student at Tulane University and I worry about what he may encounter. My other son is a student at Howard University and I watch the unrest that happens on all of these university campuses. You know, we're stuck in the middle on one side. Peaceful protests was born on the college campus. But the level of violence and hate speak that it's evolved to is unprecedented. All we can do is to continue to stick together as individuals, as government, working with local, state and federal partners to provide the resources as we have for JCC, as we have for universities, working with Homeland Security to try to ferret out where this is coming from. Because oftentimes we know that the agitators are not necessarily the bulk of these students, but agitators that are embedded in these groups and spewing the kind of hate and violence in as best we can with all of the intelligence that we have, is to ferret out those, those cells and, and deal with them accordingly. And that's not the quick and easy answer. Unfortunately, there isn't one. As long as there's mankind and humankind, you're gonna have the human element of people who parade themselves as one thing and maybe something else and espouse the kind of hate speak and hate action that we see happening all over America. Look at what happens in elementary schools when an armed gunman goes in and shoots innocent children who goes into a church or synagogue or to a concert or to a hospital or any other place where we see the kind of sick hatred that's spewed. It's a, it's a, it's a big issue and one that's gonna require all hands on deck to, to resolve. I wish I could have given you a better one. I really do. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Debbie.
Hi, Debbie.
One of my concerns is that when I see how forty-three, forty-five, depending on what your numbers are of this country, have this different mindset that goes back to the 50s. My question is, how do you work with your colleagues in Congress to make sure that Israel is protected, that Israel continues to be protected? And, and the same thing to college campuses. What, what do we do to help you as well?
Keep electing people that understand and are willing to do what's right. What the electorate has to do is hold us accountable. And let good people and unlet bad people. And make sure that those who have the, the awesome responsibility of having a vote in United States Congress, having a seat at the table when powerful policy decisions are being made, are making them based on what's best for the American people, not for themselves or their party. That's where, that's where citizens can play their greatest role. Write letters, pick up the phone, you know, ask them to come to meetings like this and challenge us. Because at the end of the day, when the lights are off, people do, can do dirty deeds. Let's keep the lights on. And the American people deserve to have their elected officials come and answer the tough questions and present before you the good, the bad, the ugly. We don't have all the answers, but we have a responsibility to at least listen. And, and when you don't have the answer, get it. But how do I deal with my colleagues? Some days it's really hard. And oftentimes requires a lot more than water. The...
We'll pray for you.
That is my secret weapon. Yes, my mother will be ninety years old in October and she's absolutely, she's absolutely my secret weapon because she, I, since my earliest beginning, I remember her saying, there's nothing more powerful than a mother's prayer. So I'll take it. Yes?
I'm Mark. We've seen protesters disrupting city council meetings, trying to get on stage at the convention. Are you sought out by them to, for local Muslim community or Palestinians or the protest folks here? Do they seek you out to engage you like this in meetings similar to this and with an expectation that you're going to hear their pleas and act on them? Or is it similar to what we're doing over here?
I've had meetings like this with some smaller groups and they were productive. I've had more meetings where it was my way of the highway discussion. Do what I say or we're going to put you on blast. We're gonna picket outside your office, we're gonna put your name and lights on. My office is at the corner of Portage St. Charles. And I've seen projectors on the building across the street from me that says, Carter has blood on his hands. I've gotten my office picketed where my staff was locked inside because they couldn't come out. I've had people in my office building say, Carter, we like you, but you may need to put your office somewhere else. Because it's disruptive. And so I've, I've been accosted in grocery stores. I've had people picket and attack us at our offices in DC. And I kinda count that as unfortunately, a part of, of, of the role that I asked for. And that is to stand up and was right. I am committed to having a discussion with anyone who's reasonable. I'm, I am absolutely committed to sitting and putting myself in front of any group. Rather you hate me, love me, agree with me or disagree with me, but let's make it respectable and let's have reasonable discussions. We may never agree at the end of the day. One thing's for certain, I'll listen and I won't lie. But I also will not bow down and be afraid. And I won't be bullied to do something that I don't believe in for fear that you will do something bodily to me or vote against me. I'm not afraid of you doing anything bodily to me. And I'm not afraid of you voting against me either. That's not why I'm elected, not to be reelected. I'm elected to do the job that you elected me to do. So when people threaten with, we'll picket you, I say, go do it. You say you wanna meet with me, I'm happy to meet with you. But if you say you wanna meet with me and if I don't do A, B and C exactly what you're saying, you're gonna picket me, then let's not meet. Just picket me. And that's not cocky, I hope that didn't come off that way. It's really just, I'm too old to play those kinda games. And I'm not going to tell you something you wanna hear for the short gain of getting out of this room. You know, I get two sons, one bears my exact full name. I need this name to have value when I'm gone.
Hello, I'm Aina.
Hi, Aina.
Thanks so much. To follow up on Mark's question, the people that he's talking about, the pro-Hamas, they seem to be so well organized across the country. And I'm wondering, and I've heard rumors and we publicly all heard rumors about the funding coming from different countries. Is there any awareness of that?
I think Iran is funding their cells of Iran and those that are funded through some of these groups. And we do have evidence to support that. And they tend to be more organized. I think the real issue is that they're more vocal. And as I've said to my friends before, for those of you who are joined with Facebook and Instagram, if you'd be so kind every now and then when they're beating the hell out of me on their goings, they get off of me. Because they have a far greater presence on social media than my friends do. So it, it gets to be quite unnerving, particularly when you have young adult sons who, you know, watch people say bad things about their dad when it's, when it's not meritorious. When you say things like you have blood on your hands, that you support genocide, that you, you, you are as bad as a, as a, as a slave owner and, you know, and I got thick skin, but some of that for your wife, your family, your mother, takes a whole nother level. And it, and it's designed to do so. And I think a lot of that unfortunately, bots, that they operate on algorithms of words and, and phrases and they pop in. And because they can't possibly be as present as they are. So there's systems in place that they have scripts that we have people during the height of the October 7th invasion and during the height of the rampant protest, our offices were getting hundreds of calls to the extent that they would put on social media, keep calling Congress from Carter's office so he cannot get any work done. And they were effective. I mean, they got, the phone was jammed just, so there had to be auto dialers because no one's sitting around all day long doing that, I think. But hate is pretty powerful, you know, but not more powerful than love. Yes? Yes?
Kind of thinking back about that, I think we've all seen, you know, some younger age demographics in the country, you know, specifically like eighteen to twenty-four demographic, even immediately after ten-seven, were, you know, exposed to evenly split fifty, fifty-fifty on whether they supported Israel or Hamas. And, and I also have no doubt, and we all, we all know that they're getting this information more often than not from TikTok and other sources that just, you know, the information's flowing in from, and we can track, it's in the tracks to Malaysia, Russia, China, Iran. What are you doing in Congress? What is Congress doing to try to rein in some of this really dangerous misinformation? Because I don't know how we reach that age demographic when we're up against that.
Well, first thing is, we have passed the law to tell TikTok, sell to an American company or we're going to, we're going to ban you. Because we know that the influence of China and others with TikTok is not of or for Americans. And so as much heat as we may get from some of our younger influencers who like the platform, you know, we have to look beyond what you see immediately and see the depth of who's controlling TikTok. And while social media has been a powerful tool, it has also been a very dangerous one. We've seen the impacts that it has on mental health for our young people, particularly in the aftermath of COVID, where kids were isolated and their only source of entertainment was social media. And social media paints a picture that everybody's life is perfect. And a kid looks at it, wait a minute, mine isn't. And we see kids with suicidal ideation, those that attempt and actually carry it out because we have these great filters that make us all look beautiful. And they have these great pictures with their families and their dog that make us look like the world is perfect when, you know, life comes at you fast and it's not. But the mental health associated with that is, these kids are looking at this and they're feeling like, wait a minute, I'm really screwed up. My life isn't worth living. And social media perpetuates that. Unfortunately, for all of its, its great tools that it's been, it also has huge drawbacks. Congress is learning from what we didn't learn with Twitter and Facebook, and we're trying to get better as social media, Instagram, and A I, and all these other things that we get an arm around this so we can govern it better, that we don't have outside influences influencing the thoughts of our young people and our not so young people who find themselves addicted, literally addicted, to TikTok and Reels that tells one joke after other, or tells one antidote or one thing, one little script after another, and people spend hours and hours and hours watching this. And oftentimes, it's anti-American, or it's anti-Jewish, or it's anti-black, or it's anti-gay, or it's anti, 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 anti. And that's being pumped into, to people's heads. And so Congress is learning from that, and we're looking at ways to regulate and to make sure that there's content regulation and that we know who operates it vis-à-vis what we've done with TikTok to make sure that either you're going to be an American company, you can subject yourselves to American regulations, or you're not going to be in operation. Yes, ma'am?
And Susan.
Hi, Susan.
I just want to say with this election coming up, I know a lot of people think a lot of Jews are only voting certain ways for the antisemitism issue or the Israel issue. But for me personally, and I think a lot of people in this room, there are a lot of other reasons that are voted reproductive rights, LGBTQ rights, immigration law, gun control law. And I just, I don't like it when they paint a picture that the Jews are voting this way because of Israel and antisemitism and nothing else. So...
Well said and totally understood by this guy. So, and, and that is, that, that's, that's unfair to Jewish people as it would be to a gay person or to an African American who would say, I only care about just race equality. Well, I care about the environment. I care about clean air and clean water. Yeah, I care about discrimination. I don't want to be discriminated against. I don't want my wife, my children, my siblings to be discriminated against, but I also care about AR-15s and the unwanted use of, of street sweepers and military-type weapons that have no real place on American streets other than in war. Listen, I believe in the Second Amendment. I believe that a person should have the right to bear arms. But when the, when the framers of the Constitution contemplated the right to bear arms, they were talking about black powder and a musket. Takes a long time to shoot more than one person with black powder. This notion that now we have street sweepers and AK-47s and AR-15s, the notion that fentanyl is pouring through the, through the border and pouring on the streets of America, reproductive freedoms, rights of women, rights of African Americans, rights of LGBTQ brothers and sisters, is something that we all have a responsibility to be concerned with. No particular race, party, interest group, religious group has the luxury of being myopic. We've got to be concerned about a whole lot of issues. And while you may have a scale of importance, they're all pretty important. So thank you for that, that, that statement because sometimes it's not as obvious with some people that our issues are not so narrow, so narrow, they're wide. So, yes, ma'am?
Oh, good evening, sir.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Carol.
Hi, Carol.
Sir, there's three things I want to tell you. One is that we are so happy that you're here tonight to talk to us about the issues that are important to our community.
Thank you.
Second thing is, I'm going to give you a piece of advice. As it turns to your two sons, when they start trying to jack up your sons on campus, you need to tell your son to tell them, hey, man, don't you know my mom will wear his combat The third thing is...
And she jumps out of plane. It's perfectly good.
The third thing is, I just would like for you to give us a little snippet of where we are with the, as I know it, the John Lewis Voting Rights Act. I mean, where are we with that? Because I think one of the biggest important things that needs to happen is that people feel empowered. They feel as if they, they, they vote will count. And right now, I'm seeing a lot in which there are people that are trying to...
Discourage the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
So the lack of that vote.
Yes. So I will tell you, we have passed the John Roberts Voting Rights Act, John Robert Lewis Voting Rights Act, three times. We haven't been able to get it out of the Senate and to the President's desk. That's why this election is so important. We haven't been able to codify a rule because we don't have the votes in, in the House. We have the threat of a Supreme Court that's ruling back rights instead of advancing them. We have a threat of some who want to attack LGBTQ rights and the right to marry who you choose. We have the attack on diversity and inclusion. So these threats are very real, and elections have consequences. And if this matters to us, then we have to talk about it. We have Project 2025 that seeks to obliterate EPA, that seeks to obliterate Veterans Affairs, to get rid of our Department of Education. We can go on and on and on about this sinister plot to diminish our democracy. And this is not Republican or Democrat in my view. This is un-American. So I say this to my friends who are Republican. I say this to my friends who are Democrat. Listen, these are un-American principles. Every American should be opposed to a Project 2025 who says, I'm going to draw away with your democracy. When a presidential candidate, and I'm not here to pro or con anybody, but when someone says, when someone says, if you vote for me and I win, you won't have to worry about voting anymore. That should scare you. Because in this system of politics, this system of government, we have the right to take a chance with an elected official. And you got a four-year contract. Do right or we'll fire you. But if we don't have that system, we're locked in. That's not America. That's not a democratic value. That's not the democracy we, we, we love. And so black, white, Republican, Democrat, rich, poor, east, west, north, south, doesn't matter. If you don't support our Constitution and our rule of law, you can't represent me. I don't care whatever attributes you may have. Your, your base level has to be protection of our democracy, protection of our rights, protection of our freedoms. If you fail those three, we don't really need to talk anymore. But that's true. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Lindsay. I'm the Director of Anti-Defamation in Karen, our community. And a little bit aside from all of this is a question about religious beliefs. We're seeing on local levels in Louisiana, in Florida, in Texas, Oklahoma, we're seeing the breakdown of the separation of church and state in schools in particular. And I'm curious if you can talk a little bit, a little bit about what you're seeing at a national level and national policies. So where we've got the Ten Commandments in Oklahoma, and here in Louisiana, we've got Craig U. Videos in Florida, and in Louisiana, we've got the Bible being included into curriculum in Texas. I'd love, these are all, I know that they say all politics are local, and I have goosebumps talking about giving those, that many examples. We also know that there's federal policies that can help counteract what we're seeing on the local, local level. So I'm curious to see sort of what the topic is in D.C. about what we're seeing on the ground in our community.
Yeah, and, and I'm equally as fearful. Unfortunately, there's a distinction between local, federal, and state government and the authorities for each, the jurisdictions for each. Happy to hear to say that there's no groundswell of members of Congress who are looking to follow step and to make this a federal mandate. Unfortunately, we do see a playbook of those who hide behind, and I say hide behind because I don't think it is presented with the level of faith as much as it is politics. And I'm all for faith. I'm not for people trying to mix the two and hide behind one when your effort is really to divide and not to unite. And I think some of the problems, or solutions rather, in search of a problem is what you see happening in Florida and Texas, and unfortunately now here in Louisiana. You know, people have the right to believe or not believe. No one has the right to force me to believe what I don't believe or to be subjected to what I don't believe while I'm in pursuit of education. I think it's a slippery slope. I think it's a dangerous place to be. I've spoken out about it. I've written op-eds about it. And I'll continue to because I think there is a perfect place for one's faith. I think there's a perfect place for one's education, recreation. And because we don't all share the same faith, but we all have the same right to be educated,
I don't want to take anyone else's chance away, but since you brought up politics, amazingly enough, the leaders of Congress are from Louisiana.
Yes, punching above our weight.
Are they, are they open to hearing from a member of our delegation who's not in their party? And what's your position on the Supreme Court, either expanding term limits, age limits, whatever that might be?
I think both Mike and Steve, the Majority Leader and Speaker of the House, are people that I've served with before in the state legislature, people that I count as friends. We philosophically disagree a lot, but I consider them friends. And I can call them, they'll call me back, and we can have debates, and we can agree to disagree as we often do. Do I believe they would come and meet? Yes, I do. I don't know that all members would, but I think, I think Steve and, well, everybody in the delegation, let me not just relegate to those because Ms. Lutlow would, I think, I think most members would. It gets kind of ugly sometimes, to be very candid, but only when the lights are on. And when I say when the lights are on, I mean the camera lights. If I were having coffee in the members' dining room, I can have a very good discussion and I can have a reasonable response. But when the cameras go on, then it's, and that's unfortunate because we shouldn't play to the cameras, right? Our elective offices shouldn't be so important to us that we follow and do things that we in our hearts know are wrong. And without going and violating any personal conversations, I will tell you, I've had conversations where some of my friends have acknowledged that they agree it's wrong, but it's not politically expedient for them, to which I say, I'd go fishing. Alcohol. I really would. And I think the second, there was a second part.
Supreme Court.
Supreme Court. I think the Supreme Court is out of control. I think the Supreme Court has attempted to make themselves above the law, not just interpreters of the law. And the ethical breaches that we've seen that have been uncovered, the out-and-out lies of what they would do if confirmed, every one of them raised their right hand before senatorial confirmations and said that they would recognize and not upset precedent, but they didn't. And to take away one's right to choose when it been precedent and we agree that this was settled law, but they didn't demonstrates an unwillingness to honor the oath of your office. And I think the notion that people can be appointed for life and have no check or balance on them is a very dangerous prospect. And I think that there should be at a minimum a, a very set of ethical rules that they have to abide by. I mean, they're like, we have the ability to impeach a, a, a Supreme Court Justice, but it's not easy. So maybe the, the idea of having, you know, twenty-year terms versus lifetime terms, or ten or fifteen-year terms. I think there has to be a substantive term. You don't want that level of institutional knowledge turning over every two or four, six years. But a lifetime, when people are being appointed in their forties and people are living a lot longer and living pretty good lives on the public's behalf, is, is dangerous. So I would be supportive, clearly have stated publicly that I'm supportive of reform, what that looks like I'm open to, but I know what we have currently doesn't work. Anytime we have a system where we have a rule of law that some don't have to abide by, it's broken. Yes?
I just, first of all, I want to thank you for standing with your convictions, even though there's loud voices, the people that might even be cool in their party, and people who stand up and say that, well, you believe and what I, what I, I really respect and appreciate that. What I want to reflect to is an area which was touched upon by the locals, the thin American abroad, who people feel. I think a big part of the push that a lot of Jewish organizations have pushed for, which is very hard to get everyone on the same page, has been the local target hard and funding, the nonprofit Security Grant funding. So I know that there's been a lot of that, we've been, you know, the fact that many organizations, the community. What is the prospect of increasing and doing more of that? Because we have a lot of families that, that they're made a concern for bringing their child to school is security and safety. And I think that, I know that there's been, it jumped a lot over the last few years, from tens of millions to hundreds of millions. I just want to know what your view on that and how you...
I, I will tell you from where I sit, I say whatever it takes. Because people have the right, and children have the right to, to worship and to be taught in spaces that are safe. And it's un-American that a child would have to go to class and have to worry about bullets instead of books. So whatever it takes. The, the, the relationship that government has to protect these people has no bounds. There is no limit. Whatever it takes. But we have to do simultaneous tracks. We can't just keep making, building stronger fortresses. We have to also go against violators simultaneously.
One's a much smaller project than the other, though. I think that's one's act.
Yeah, so, but, but we can't, we can't, they're not mutually exclusive. We can't do one without the other. Because otherwise, we continue to build ourselves inside of bulletproof walls while the bad guys control the streets that we should be able to enjoy too. So we protect places where, 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 that are meritorious to protect and where the public's being educated or recreating, while we go after those who would violate that. Because we can't give them free rein. And to go to, to Morris's comment, you know, when do we hit back? When do we hit back? And we can't just play defense. We got to play offense too. Does that answer your question?
I mean, I'm just adding for more funding.
I agree, but I started, I started, I started with whatever it takes because I believe funding is essential, and I'll continue to fight for that. Maybe gave you a little bit more than you asked.
I think that other components vary well, because wasn't a lot of times, and I, I recognize that, same as foreign policy, those components, as a member of Congress can influence as much as they would like. So I'm trying to...
Unfortunately, we are a body of five hundred and thirty-five between the House and Senate, and we do nothing alone. Majority rules on everything, and it's just not easy to get a majority of the House or majority of the Senate, or God forbid, both, in agreement on almost anything. majority of the Senate, or God forbid, both, in agreement on almost anything. But we wake up every day, and we continue to push, and that's why I mentioned the importance of citizenry. Because you play a huge role in shaping opinion and shaping action. Because when people who aren't already predisposed to do what's right, they're motivated by people who threaten to fire them. Yes?
Adding on to that last question, we're so thankful for all the nonprofit security grant program funding that flows into the community here, but I think any head, any agency in this room will tell you that one of the biggest things that we run into is that it doesn't support soft improvements. It's all hard costs, it's hardening of buildings, but again, every person I've looked at in the room, that probably does know us in here, that are dealing with the soft costs of having to hire security guards to be able to stay outside of the building from morning till night, when the kids are coming to school and leaving, or our mitzvahs or weddings, whatever it may be. Is there any, has there been any talk, or is there any chance of finding some way in the future to include that and, you know, make that available?
Government, whether it's local, state, or federal, the most efficient way for us to appropriate dollars is for bringing more hard costs. It's very difficult for us to commit to operational costs. And that's why you see, whether it's local, state, or federal, that operational costs, government's probably not the best place to get that. Hard costs, we can do infrastructure, we can build things, we can help you acquire things, but the operational costs has always been a challenge for any government. Doesn't mean we won't find a way to do it, we just haven't yet. Yes, sir?
Is it a challenge with the personnel cost? I want you to get on.
One more time, I'm sorry.
Is it a problem with funding personnel, that when you start and stop it?
That's part of it. It becomes a, and when you start funding one, how do you determine one fund that you could and should, and should get it done, and that doesn't? And before you know it, there's some who argue that government's too big. If we start funding things, our government's gonna get really big. We start funding operation of, imagine the device that we have already within the confines of Congress, that becomes a slippery slope.
Counselor Public?
Yes, sir.
So, education's a public good.
Yes, it is.
That's why we as a community contribute to education. And I don't know if this is something at the local level or state level or local level, but shouldn't there be a way to fund the safety of kids in the same way that we're funding education of kids? And, you know, even non-public schools aren't receiving dollars from the state, dollars from their programs. In the same way we support these programs, because they contribute to our whole economy, to our whole community, shouldn't there be some way, and again, I'm not saying just money out of some magical place, but to look at that as part of the cost of education?
And it does, because there are community resource officers who are paid for, that are embedded in schools as a part of federal, local, or state funding. So to some extent, that is part of it, creating safe places for students. When I was in the legislature as a very young man in nineteen ninety-two, I passed my very first law that I ever passed, the law was to create gun-free zones. The signs that you see all over the state, I was fortunate to be the person that advanced that and got it signed by then-Governor Edwards to become law. Part of those cycles are providing resources to have safe places inside of schools, be it security guards, be it bulletproof windows, be it active shooter drills that are funded for. So there are components of government, state, local, and federal dollars that go toward protecting our young people. It's the ongoing funding of the operations of entities that become a challenge and difficult for federal government or local government to fund. That's why you see, at the local government will have capital outlay dollars to help you build a gymnasium, but we won't help you run the gymnasium. There has to be a partnership with the local government to have it as a part of the New Orleans Recreation Department, or what have you. But the out-and-out operation of someone who comes up and has a great idea and says, we're gonna do this, it's gonna be a nonprofit, and we'll help you build it, but we can't help you run it. But the education, you are correct, and we do provide resources to make schools safer.
Seven thirty, it's up to, I don't know if you want to take one or two?
I'm a glutton. I'm happy to take one or two. I know where we're supposed to start, but I'm. Any other burning questions? I'm sorry?
You want to talk about Jeff Landy and his group?
I'm an open kimono, I'll talk about anything you want to talk about. I am fearful that there's an overreach and a denial of the city charter and the rights of the people that are in the city of New Orleans or any other jurisdiction. We elect governors, not dictators. We elect governors that are bound by the power of the Constitution and not expanding beyond the rights of local government. As a student, purveyor, and teacher of government, I really, really respect the Constitution, if you haven't figured that out. And I believe in the separation of powers, and I believe in a limit on powers, so no one person or individual or group becomes all-powerful. The power rests in the people. And when we lose that, we lose our democracy. And I think that, Jeff is a friend of mine, I've known him for many years, but if he were here today, he would tell you that I've said to him that our democracy belongs to the people, it don't belong to any of us. And the notion that one person would attempt to gobble so much power is dangerous.